Carroll County Commissioners Meeting, uh, the second of September, second meeting. And I'd invite you to join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We are ready to prepare claims.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve all claims as presented.
Okay. All right, I have a motion and a second to approve all claims as presented. All in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. And we are ready for Executive Director Cameron Yates.
Morning.
Good morning, Chairman.
I'm gonna keep this short this week, 'cause I know you guys have a busy. Uh, so this morning, I'm in front of you about regarding Tippy's Restaurant in Pittsburgh. Uh, they were in front of you guys, I think, two months ago, to vacate an alley. The big picture is, they, they came to us when I first took this role two years ago to do some small things. Uh, and it was discovered they were zoning U1 urban. Um, it's been business for, I'm forty-five years old, it's been business since I was, I think. So, I spoke with them to get things kinda caught up and told them, you know, if you guys wanna do any more renovations, it needs to be zoned properly. So, they have done a great job of getting the, the business going, done everything right. They did the alley process right through you guys. Uh, they made it a really nice restaurant. So, they approached our board last month, um, to get the property, um, re-zoned to, to business like it should be, like it should've been several years ago, and it was unanimously approved. So, today I'm asking for the Commissioners' approval to make the final and get them going. And they've been great, they, they've worked with us and they understood the whole process. I don't think they have any plans to do really a whole lot of anything, they just want the business to be legal. Uh, they, they want it to be legal zoning in case they do change things, but, you know, they wanted the alley vacated so they have parking for the business and they put a nice deck out there. So, they've done a great job with it, this just kinda is the, is the finish line for them and they'll be done with it. So, like I said, it's been U1 urban for several years and I'm not sure why it wasn't ever made to be zoned business, because it was a fish house before that, it was, I, I think it was the landmark and then, you know, of course, Carroll Johnson or, yeah, the Johnsons under it for whatever it was called back in the day. So, it just, it needed to be business, to be properly zoned, yeah. So, the short and sweet part, that's all I got.
All right, so I have a mo- have a motion and a second to change this from U1 to B1. Yeah, you say you're forty-seven years old and it's always been around seventy-two and I, I don't remember copying.
No, I never gone over my grandpa, the kid, he'd fish, I just, it was a business, so.
The Regal store was across the street here and that fountain used to be out in front there, right in front of the old grocery store. My uncle lived just north out there always. Okay, so I got a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
There's two copies out there for you, for you guys.
Marvin?
There's two copies to sign if you would please, thank you. It's, uh, two dollars for, so good for you guys. Bill, that's to the county officer. Yes? I did. I, I, Chairman said I did. Thank you, sir. Thank you guys, I appreciate it.
Where on this map is it? I can't figure it out.
The, the ones out behind, and then they had the two properties, obviously they took that alley out. The house next to it, they planned it.
Seems like it's on the wrong side of the street.
This is the, this is the, this is the bar right here.
North is to your right of the beach.
Here?
This should be.
Fountain is straight up north.
Yeah.
So, that's Tippy's, they own this lot right here and this lot right here, this.
Oh, well, what's the gray one in there?
The, the one that shaded in there was, I think it's, used to be a, the guy re-zoned it, I think it's a electrical company now, it used to be an ice company.
Yeah, it's that white building?
Yeah, yeah, so they have three lots there and they're in the process of trying to get that rental house next to it, there's, when that happens, and it's not gonna be zoned, be anything other, it's, it's already urban, it's a rental. But these three parcels right here are the, uh, yeah, the three and S.
I saw that, to me, gray one there, I thought, well, I could.
No, that one's already been, that one's been zoned B1 business, I think they did that. I, I'm not sure the exact year, but I think they were able to do something with the ice, you know, I don't know. But it was already his own business and I think they're.
Did I mention that some old batch water and ice tea?
Yeah, 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 and thank you. Yep.
Okay, we have Mr. Matt Maverick. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Matt Maverick, I'm the IT Director at Miami-Cass RNC. I brought with me our sales and marketing, he's also with Miami-Cass RNC. And then, we have gentleman from Carroll White, CEO, and also the IT Director Travis Lightright and CEO Ray Christe. Kinda here to start an initial discussion about broadband in Carroll County and the need for it. Just to give you a little overview of our company and what we're about, uh, eighty-two years ago, we brought electric to the rural people and we're doing the same thing with internet. Uh, we've recently got grants through, uh, Miami County as well as Cass County, and we're also trying, we're working with Power County and we, we're also gonna be building in Carroll and White County already due to, uh, federal funding that we've received. So, really, it's just the initial discussion that I'd like to talk to you about as to, um, would you be interested in building in Carroll County? Would you be interested in, um, utilizing any of your ARP money to build out in Carroll County? As well as, um, we put forward, um, actually us putting up money as well as working with you in the county. Uh, we're in talks with the Mayor of Delphi, um, actually building out here as well. So, that's really just the initial discussion, uh, without going too far into depth, that's how, where we are and how, how long we've been doing it and what we're doing and what we're about. It's really open for discussion with you guys.
My, I messaged Jake from EDC, who's gonna be here, he said he's worked with EDC before.
Yes, sir, we worked.
We started the process where you gotta get a permit and so we don't just get any, um, Joe going here, you know, whatever they want, we wanna make sure we get somebody in here who's capable of doing what they need to do. I think your first step was nice to come to us and introduce yourselves, I appreciate that. We'll make your second step, go to EDC and start the process there in the area, like, to get, get the ball working, because I'm in favor of it, I live in Camden and I get that, whatever you call it.
Fix, fix wireless.
Yep, yep, and it works half the time, sometimes.
Yeah, I'll get you by on certain things, but other days, like days like today. Right. Drastically graded performance.
I'd really like to see the door house get, so, with everything we got running, it's a new place.
Yeah, and ta- in our talks with the mayor, yeah, we've, we've already presented, uh, through, through them, uh, a quote for what it costs to build out. Uh, they're in the process of requesting RFPs for that, right now, I think for doing the twenty-nine of this.
So, let me ask, true, let me ask, what, uh, what will we notice different when you get this done?
You will notice, I mean, it, it'll improve the econ- I mean, economic development across the board. I don't know if it, through the pandemic, what it showed is how much it's needed. I, I always try to use the example for me, if I'm sitting in my house and I'm cooking dinner and I have a, I get an alert on my phone and the server's down, I can walk back to my office, I can fix what's, what's broken from my office at my house and I go back to enjoying what's most important, my family. So, that's the biggest thing for, for that, as well as like teledoc, as well as the learning. I mean, more and more, you know, how many times have kids got sent home during, during the pandemic? I know my daughter was numerous times, contact tracing and whatnot. What we like to do, my name is Mike Baron, uh, what we like to do and what we've done in other counties is, we get together with you, we open the discussion. Obviously, we work hand in hand with economic development, like we have in Cass County and Christie. So, then we go to the schools, we contact the, the superintendents of every school in your county. And then we get maps, where the undersu- underserved students in your county and who can't just afford it to. It's not just a matter of who's underserved, but who can't afford it. So, being a co-op, we can work with them on pricing as well, we can get them at-cost internet. So, we do education first, then we, we lay that map down. Then, so once education's in place, then we work with economic development to see where, okay. I, I've, for ten years, I've taken calls in your community. I know Cutler, all the way to Burlington, it, all that is completely underserved, they can't get anything, you can't work from home, you can't do any of the conveniences that you need. So, me as a business, the first question I'm gonna ask is, what's your infrastructure for fiber, internet, anything? Because that's how I'm gonna do all my buying and selling, that's, I, I, a lot of people have worked from home now. So, uh, create overhead, your employees may not even work there. So, in types of business to your county, we work with economic development. I've seen some of the bigger economic development stuff going on, the mayor showed us a medical facility, housing. So, basically, we're hand in hand with schools, economic development and you. And what we're doing right now in Cass County is, we're meeting monthly with the schools, economic development and the Commissioners, like, once a month, and we're giving updates. Hey, this is where we're at with the bill, this is what we're doing. So, it's not just like a hands-off approach, we're coming in and we're getting involved in your community and making sure you have the infrastructure to grow in the future. With a co-op, yeah, I'm selling the co-op, 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 because that's one of our principles, to get back to the community. So, that's why we talk with Carroll White, because we don't wanna come in and be like, hey, we want, we wanna work over here in Carroll White and just not ask them. So, um, they're here with us today in support of, of what we're doing here, because we work amongst each other. We don't just try to go grab business where we can, we respect each other's territories and work together.
So, will you be laying fiber or what?
Yes, sir, fiber is. We already have federal funding for fiber in Carroll County. So, we got that last year, it was in an auction, so we had bid certain areas and we've received certain areas in Carroll County, that's why we're interested in being, along with, we already have wireless in your communities too. With the wireless, if we go down and lay down a fiber, uh, robust fiber infrastructure, that can enhance the fiber, uh, the wireless experience as well. But our, with the RDOF, money that we receive, that will be directly to fiber to the home. So, the best internet you can get possible. And as far as businesses go and whatnot, I, I try to use, the people that are right across the road from us, Cotronics, we're located on thirty-one and one hundred North, right across from the truck stop. Um, Cotronics was paying eighteen T around twelve hundred dollars a month and now they pay us three fifty a month.
And then you hit like three times the amount of what they were getting.
The speeds that they were getting before was fifty-fifty and now we're hitting one fifty, one fifty. It's not just the speeds and the products, but it's also the service. What I've noticed in your county especially, I've kept an eye on, is people go out often, the internet goes out often and that's a problem, because if you're in a meeting or anything, you're not able to work from home, you just let, everything goes out, it's, it's annoying and it's just not good for business. So, we come in and we build redundancy in our network so that you have less outages as well. And you may go out, but we'll be helping you ready, pack up, I mean, it's not gonna be a week, two days. That's what I've been noticing a lot with the people in Carroll County, mainly the plumbers, so.
So, you already have third territories.
So to speak, yes.
Yeah, and, uh, is, is Cutler Burlington one of those there is?
Cutler, I've been looking forever, um, you have wireless, uh, Hoosier broadband, so, won't be, first, we're gonna come in and go up on the grain like that, Cutler, and that, not compete on that grain.
Say that last part again.
Hoosier broadband or wireless, I don't know, was up on the grain like there.
Right.
So, I couldn't get on that grain like, so there was no way for us to build out wirelessly. So, I think the only way to build out is to build fiber straight to Cutler and service the whole town fiber at home.
When might that happen?
When do you guys wanna say aye? That's, that's only gonna happen, we can, we can start, when can we start?
Yesterday?
Yesterday. So, another thing with us is, we went ahead, pre-pandemic, we went ahead and bought fiber before everything was, how long out?
Uh, it used to be anywhere, it'd be from twelve weeks to twelve weeks.
So, now we have the fiber setting in our yard, ready to go. Everybody else is gonna have to wait, the lead times on fiber went up to forty to seventy weeks now. So, if you don't already have the materials, you're kind of, you're uncaught for as well.
I think it's for help our nine-one-one center, because we use phone lines.
Another thing we do is, we set up community centers, um, so, in Cass County and every township, we're gonna set up a free community center for kids to come to for free. Like, uh, for instance, like, uh, twelve-mile community center, we'll do that free. We've been doing, um, you're at this four H, or three for the past two years, so you guys did live streaming, um, things like that, EMS, all, everything like that, we, we'll be able to do, but we'll be able to do it better. In the next ten years, the, the demand for data is gonna increase about ten times, just because of the device, kinda, you may not notice it, but I do. Looking at, just at the meetings I'm at, they say, in the next ten years. So, you really wanna get that infrastructure out so that you're ahead of the curve.
Chairman, did you hear the comment?
Yeah, what's the ratio comparison for what's gonna be proposed going overhead and what's going underground?
Uh, so we try to say, uh, overhead as much as possible, so we're at ninety-six percent overhead and about four percent underground. If we can go overhead, we go. Cost effective wise, what the comparison.
Would you say most of it will be underground?
Overhead, sir, not, we, right now, our current infrastructure is ninety-six percent overhead, four percent underground.
Top of your pole, your, the RMC plant.
Yes, sir, and, uh, for us to go underground, it's eight dollars for, is what we pay our contract business. So, you, I mean, so we try to say over, overhead as much as possible. There's other companies that, uh, for example, IFN Intelligent Fiber Network, um, it used to be called Indiana Fiber Network, they bring a lot of transport up from Indianapolis and all of the, all of theirs is underground, they do all underground work, so.
Do you want to, you'd be submitted to ice storm, maybe that type too?
Yes, but we also, we, there's certain calculations you must do for SAG and we, we do everything at heavy load, so. Should've had SAG already built in, the way we build our line, it's the same way we build our electrical line. No life, I'm, I'm alive with fiber too. So, fiber currently has a thirty-year life, uh, life span, so you'd be able to depreciate it for thirty years.
And your property value, the value of it, it'd increase, it'd be about thirty percent on, on your home.
Yeah, we, we recently worked with, uh, Ken, well, Ken Walton, yeah, Conduit, uh, he was building that development there with eleven properties, so he came to us and, uh, we already have conduit and fiber ran to all of his ped schools for each location, so it's already ready. So, when somebody buys a plot of land from him and they build a house there, we'll be able to get them fiber right away. And that was one of his big things, is he wanted it ready, ready to go, so when people start moving in, they just plug in all together.
So, what do you want us to do?
We wanna work with you guys.
What's that be?
So, basically, if, if you wanted to, I would come up with a, basically a RFP showing you what we would be providing in Carroll County and how many miles, the cost of the project, what we would be contributing to the project, um, everything of that sort. And we can build it, I always tell every other county we've talked with, I will build it however you want, I will do whatever you want me to do, I'll take it wherever you need me to take it. Whereas if I was a competitor or in this for profit, I wouldn't, I would not give people that option, because I would wanna go and hit the most, um, you know, most dense areas first so I can get my money back as quick as possible. But being as a co-op, we are able to do that, I don't, I don't have to make money off this, I, so.
So, you're gonna service your whole area, you announce RMC services?
Yes.
House with RMC as its available?
Yes, sir, yes. So, our, so our first initial build will be, we, we start out, we, we build a ring in Carroll County. And then off of that, you start building laterals off of that in two different communities. So, this would also help as well with our current infrastructure of our fixed wireless, like Mike said, that we'd be able to fiber back all, and we'd be able to increase people paying with their. So, it, it would initially already help the communities that we already serve in your county. What we do with Cass County was, we're partially in Cass County, then you have the, in the meeting. So, we, we went to them and said, hey, this is where we're gonna build, what can we do here with you guys? So, then they laid out kind of like a ring in their, in their territory, whether it was Steven, uh, Logan Municipal, whatever. And then we went zones, okay, look, which zone do you wanna build out first? Like Cut, like Cutler for, say, Cutler, for instance, since we've already talked about it. We go, that would be an entire zone, you wanna build that out first. And however you guys wanna build the zones out is however, I mean, it's up to you guys. If you wanna do like, um, a boat, if you wanna go in and like, see who wants it the most or where you guys need, that's completely up to you guys.
I think if we did who wants it the most, I think we'd have this courthouse full of people.
Right, and all, I, that's just it, it's like, we're, we're out trying to create that bridge.
Are you guys booking with Duke? Because where I live, my neighbors are RMC and I'm Duke.
We're listening every day.
Yeah, we're only like twelve feet apart.
Yes, yeah, but, um, how long, they, they, they have a little bit longer time to get back with us. So, they have sixty days, one sixty day poll request for them, for them to come back to us and they basically tell us, if they have to do make-ready, which make-ready is, this pole's not tall enough for you to get clearance. So, if they have to do make-ready or we can go underground. So, if we decide to go underground, then we go underground for a stand, a pole, and then bring it back in up and go back there.
Well, that's kinda what I was wanting, you know, because to use Cutler, that's where I brought it. East of Cutler and south of Cutler are Duke, not RMC.
And that's okay, we work. It doesn't, it's, we have people that lobby for us down, uh, state at IEC and they go in and make sure that it's all equal plan to for co-ops as well.
Yeah, we already have poll attached by agreement to Duke and Carroll White, you tell them you. So, basically, I think we're all kinda on the same page, we just need to get you started with area plan in EDC.
Yes, sir.
We can put in an ordinance where we have to follow now, so.
No, that, that's fine, I just, I really just wanted to see if you guys are interested and you would like us to actually present something, so.
Are we interested, guys?
I mean, we got a lot of people that's working from home that has issues.
I'm interested, I, I, I get, uh, I know that the Chamber of Commerce here set up a cubicle where people can come in from home and work on it, because they can't get it at home, yeah.
So, is your vision to provide broadband internet service to every, everywhere in Carroll County that has power to do for?
Everybody in Carroll County, period.
And residents and businesses, do you have an idea how it's possible compared to current internet service providers?
So, our current plan's, uh, for a hundred and fifty megabag package is fifty-eight eighty-five, for a three hundred meg package is eighty-six eighty-five. Unlimited data, so you're not, you're not gonna get slowed down after you use so much data, that's unlimited all the time, data.
We don't, we don't have contracts either, we don't.
So, sixty dollars a month of homes that have, at, pretty adequate.
Yeah.
Apparently reliable.
Could be provided.
Yes, and not to mention, like I said previously, we wanna work with students too that aren't, aren't able to afford it at cost prices, so.
Randy Travis, do you guys have any comments, you want to say anything?
No, I, I think the collaboration though needs to be emphasized, that, I don't think the distribution system so your electric service will not be compromised, and I think that that's something that should be reassuring to the community. And the make-ready comments that the guys made, um, we will make every effort to raise the poles and do anything that's necessary so farm machinery doesn't have trouble getting underneath it or semis, things of that nature, because we would not want it to be a setback to that infrastructure that the community's invested in as well, because that is locally owned, that's, that's one message that, that really, it really goes a long ways with co-ops, it's, it's locally governed and locally owned. So, the community has the equity in the company when it's built out.
It's, it's really exciting to work with co-ops, I've come with a broadband company pre-co-op. So, seeing this model compared to what the model would like without the co-op, it's, it's much better. It's much better business minus, much better for your community, um, and it's, it's exciting actually, because for ten years, I've had some people love.
Be looking for a.
And that's just not an excuse anymore, it's, it's twenty-twenty-one, everybody should have the same opportunities as living in town or a big city, um, you have a right to education, you have a right to spend time with your family. And this broadband infrastructure, that is gonna make all that possible.
Most of us even have flash towers.
I know.
Here, we have somebody here who's a very good representative of the, of the agriculture of the county area, do you have anything to add, add to this?
So, we, we currently have to subscribe to two different internet providers and we get two different bands of twenty, twenty-five megas per segment, one's Broadway, Broadway here on, on our grain leg. It is not nearly enough for our farm operation. Our grain trucks all have wireless in them so that they can talk to our, our grain operation. Um, our farm uses internet in the shop so that we can access our, our repair manuals and, and our, um, make, make orders and do business. Um, we are locally underserved in terms of amount of, of internet bandwidth that we get and like you said, it's, it's very unreliable, it's subject to whether it goes out a lot. Working over the, the weekend, I've had several, this weekend, I just had multiple urges. This can't come fast enough to the local communities.
That's where we're here. Well, we're gonna work with you, so how are we here?
Yes, sir, I think we just need to start with EDC and area plan, you know, the other area plan director behind you, Mr. Yates. Appreciate you guys having it, appreciate the phone call.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, and we appreciate it. We'll go ahead and leave and let you talk about it.
Okay, Mike.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Okay, uh, we are down to, a little bit ahead of you, Sherman Noble. Good morning.
Wonderful. I'd like to recognize before you two begin this, I got a couple of documents that I'd like to have, that, you know, on screen first.
Do you like to start this out, you say, Jim?
Yeah, I, it might be, it might inform the discussion.
Okay. Okay, so, Mr. Noble, we'll start with our attorney here.
Okay. So I was contacted by an attorney representing the persons who filed the suit that was dismissed and served in court concerning Sunset Park. The, the suit was, uh, was successful. And then, um, owners petitioned to set the judge aside, it's set aside. Uh, so the persons that wanted to vacate this are going to be pursuing this again. Uh, and they made petition to board commissioners to vacate, uh, this part of this walkway. So having been forewarned that that's a possibility, I began researching this. And what I, I found was the, uh, uh, what partially, the first, the first one is, now this is hardly visible. If you slide it, uh, this is from the original plat. Keep going. Okay, right there. That's the part and that's the walk. And it says park. So, uh, that was, uh, there is no, there is nothing that indicates that the county ever accepted any part of this plat. Even if it did, it's my opinion that, that this part and that walkway are like a common area in the subdivision. People have, uh, uh, that, that build subdivisions that had, they had a lake or a pond in them. They frequently put in a common area for the benefit of the residents of the subdivision so that they can swim, picnic, and they have an access. Well, this was what the purpose of this was, was to give the residents access to, uh, the lake and also a place that they could all enjoy. Uh, the next document is, and this was from nineteen twenty-seven, I believe. This one was originally.
Twenty-nine?
Yes. Okay, so the next document, which, uh, is on, actually on the back of the sheet that, uh, Mr. Noble gave out. This is a dedication by the Indianapolis Life Insurance Company, uh, in July of nineteen forty-five, which dedicates that park area and that walkway to the residents.
Not the owners?
It is, where is that? Language is.
Set owners of?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Set owners of Sunset Park. For use as a park and for the purposes of providing ingress and egress. This is not a public dedication. That was not dedicated to the public. It was dedicated to the, the residents and the owners of the subdivision. So this is a private park, an a private access. It's owned in common by the residents of the subdivision. Now, it's not been litigated and it may, it may not be litigated, or this may be the end of it. But in my opinion, uh, the board of commissioners has no jurisdiction to vacate a, a private park or a private walkway. You can only vacate public ways that are out of the county, unincorporated areas of the county. So, uh, if there is a petition presented to vacate this by board, I'll be advising the board that you have no jurisdiction. So, but.
That's what I was here for. I was here, I heard about the vacating thing. We had a problem with, look at the picture, you can go down the thing and you can see on there that it was dedicated to Sunset Park property owners, okay? And then later on, in twenty oh eight, I, I, I had a problem with the people down there. So I, I brought all paperwork and stuff to this building. And this building, they, they discovered that we were in a riot and they filled the paper out and said that you guys would not allow any more people to build on the property, the parks. And it, and it was all straightened out. And then these new owners came and they, uh, filed for a quiet title for the easement next to their, their particular property. It comes out to be quiet title because there's, there's no owner record because it's park. It says access to the park. There's five, not this one. And the judge was being, being new to doing here, he granted them the paperwork, okay? He, he, he granted it to them. We, we found it, found out within it before, before the time was up. There's a, the time period. Once they granted things, it was, it was too much time to be able to fight. Anyways, we fought it and we went to, to the judge and he determined that legally, that they should, we should have been notified. And when you guys were notified, you didn't respond to it. And they notified you. This, this, that's what happened. That's how the little safety, safety things passed by. So we were not protected. So it cost us twenty-five hundred dollars to get a theory, the lawyer across the street, to get him to, uh, revert it back to us. But see, these people, before, before the court, they came up, they dismissed their, their case. They dismissed, they, they stopped it. But meanwhile, we still are upstairs. The stairs are gone. Now older people cannot get down to these anymore. And they don't have to replace them because it was never, never, uh, they didn't go through the judge all, all the way through where the judge said, it's, it's yours. They didn't, they didn't do that. But see, these people that took the stairs off, they are also us. They're not separated from us. So when I heard about the vacated thing, I'm wondering, how can they vacate something when it's been in constant use since nineteen forty-five by not only us, them also? They, they got their docs, everything's sitting there. But they're trying to say, cause we, we don't go back in there, not each at a time. That we're trying, that we're vacating. And that, that was what I read up on. And we can't vacate if it's been in constant use of nineteen forty-five. And in some, in some cases, your, your counsel is able to vacate properties. You had, you did, not you guys. And that, that's like, they vacated a, a, a thing. They took away easement from people, but they didn't have all the people sign. So three people that didn't sign, when they lost their properties later on or tax, so whatever happened, the one person ended up with them. He sued the county. And then the county reverted it back to the original property owners to have access to the property. And I was thinking, if it went to that, it would cost us a lot through the court stuff. So I was thinking, I go over here ahead of time before it happens to inform you that it was reversed in Bass County, Bass Lake. Bass, Bass Lake, which is, which is in Indiana. That's one case I found that is Indiana, was concerned, would concern you guys. And I don't, and I don't know exactly how the law works, what, what the part you have that you can vacate or not vacate. He explained it earlier, so that's, it's fine. But that's what I'm here for. I'm, I'm here to speak for the Sunset Park property owners, by one, one person. I'm here to speak for them. So we don't get vacated. That's what I'm trying to do.
If there is a petition to vacate this, we'll send the commissioners. And in this, this particular case, the owners of, of subdivision, you need to be notified so that they can participate in here. And it depends if, you know, this is, if there's something filed, but, uh, if, if there's not, it, it's open. And in my opinion, it's pretty clear. It's, it's, it belongs to the owners in the subdivision. It's not a public. You can't have outsiders come into it. You, they can have invitees and guests and so forth and so forth. Uh, and that's, that's okay. So. Status quo is probably what it should be here, but there may be litigation still on this to get counted.
How big is this piece of property?
It's large. It goes between thirty and fifty feet. It wraps around through, uh, from here to here.
Thanks.
Which is pretty far on this, on the setup. So, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, fourteen, fifteen. Seventeen properties is a, 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 a joint park. And then the park comes up. And then you have the C, people on the other side. The next side is five. The side of the park.
Five timber park area.
They try to access to it. Not just one, when you, one paper, it wasn't complete.
Are they, and the rest of them called park, label park?
They're, yes, the whole thing is, is all part. It says, this is part. This is the park right here, this park here, this, this. You can see where their property stopped when they did their survey. And then it says park. And it goes wrapped around like this. And it goes all the way up to, up to this, one of those stop sign. And we'll, we'll be, we'll be bringing up the case later about encroaching on, on the park. Because we have, we have one house over there. The guy owns thirty feet of stone property. His house is seventy foot wide. So he encroaches in the park. So we're gonna, we're, we're taking that one out a little bit later.
Do you have an association? Is it legally organized?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
But it will be.
Okay.
The easement itself is what, fifty feet wide, you say, or?
Ten foot.
How long?
It's ten foot wide. Easement's ten foot, ten foot wide. Yes, hundred and ninety. That one, that's bigger one is. The next one is ten foot wide. And at the bottom, it goes twenty foot wide. But see, when it hits, hits the end, it hits the park. That's, that's access to the park. And then the next one is ten foot wide. That one, nobody ever uses. Even way back then, it's got a carport there and all the trees are grown up, but it's still an easement for Sunset Park property owners. And then the next one is used by lots and lots of people. They have a boat dock out there like this, going like this. So it's a different area, that's different stuff. And so these, so these places, they built over top of it. They concrete it right over top. And when you, and anybody goes over there that doesn't live in that house, cops come. But when the cops come, they don't even have to take work. And it's dismissed. The, the cops go away. But meanwhile, they, all the hassle, every time somebody goes over there, cops are called. My nephew came to visit. My, my dad. My nephew's, uh, not tail, dad. County cop, Mon, Moncela cop, and the state cop, they on there. Thirteen years old. This is his grandfather. He can't go in the dock. So it was, it was, it was straight down right then. But since then, they've been a new owner in, in the house next to the, or to the So I landed right across from the first engine. And I would never bought my house if I couldn't access the water.
Well, we already.
No action required.
Huh?
No action required.
We appreciate you letting us know about this. We had had calls on this floor. Yes, sir.
I'm just, I know it's considered unplanted land now, but.
Wait, can you come on this a little bit further, Sam?
Sorry. It used to be considered Sunset Park throughout all the G I S or the landings, but here recently it's changed to unplanted land. Not sure why that is, but that's probably why it happened in the first place.
It may be. We have, that part, I'm just, uh, I've not been able to find that, that the subdivision was accepted by the board of commissioners. And if, if, uh, sometimes subdivisions are platted and the subdivision owner doesn't fall through and gets the proper acceptance and, uh, by the board of commissioners. So at that point, the assessing officials have to treat all those lot lines as just the boundaries of small tracts. Unplanted. So it may, that may be what it is. I didn't ask the assessor that question. But, uh, there's no, nothing on the original plat. It's in the recorder's office that shows that the commissioner signed off on, on the plat. So it may all be small tracts, but I don't think that takes away from the position that, that this park area and these access areas, they're, they're definitely there. And, and they've been used.
I've used them all my life.
They've been used. So I, I think they're secured legally. And, and, and certainly the board of commissioners, in my opinion, do not have any authority to vacate anything there.
I just know in the last fifteen years, the growth has just tried and been overtaking all the property within it. I don't, I mean, I, I'm just shocked that they're able to build what they've been doing lately, within the last fifteen years.
So I haven't talked to Cameron about this one. Uh, I've talked to the park board president and, and the surveyor and the assessor and so forth. So far, everybody says there's nothing to indicate that these were publicly dedicated. And so once they're not publicly dedicated, then, then they're private.
That's why I got a paper in two thousand and eight to show you that, that you guys said you would not let anybody build on that from that time.
Yeah.
That's how your paper.
From the last area plan.
That was, yeah. That was from a while back, but that's.
Recorded with the recorder's office.
Yes.
That's the best from here.
Yeah, I recorded both in papers. Joe. His name is Joe. Tell your name.
Joe.
You know, why?
Joe Morris?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much for listening.
I'm, I'm gonna ask a favor. If, if you have names and addresses of the owners, and if this comes up, we'll have a ready-made list. We might be able to, uh, you know, we can go on the beacon and get them, but, uh, if you've got a list.
Oh, yeah, there's, there's a bunch. Over a hundred and thirty-five actual physical people that own property there. But some of them own nineteen properties, some of them own seven properties, some own four properties. Like me, I own three. He owns a dozen. You know, there's stuff like that.
We'll probably be looking it up online.
And these people across the front is, is our concern because they think that because they are funding the park, that they think that they own the park. That's what I'm talking about. And this happened when he was a child. When he was a kid, it was a park there to play. That's the ball and whatever. And how they put it in the box. And I, I got pictures of each property to show how, how they're encroaching. And like I said, that's the third case. I'm gonna sell one of my houses over there and use that money to make them move all the stuff that they.